All right, good evening or slash afternoon, I guess. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for August 18th, regular city council meeting. And with that, we're gonna do invocation, and we have Pastor Holly Woodall of United Methodist Church.
Good evening. Let us pray. Gracious and glorious Creator God, above all else, thank you for every opportunity you give us to come together as your children, as a family of believers, as a community, to live together, to challenge each other, to do the best we can in your name, to lift up our neighbors and to celebrate all those around us. God, we ask that you lay your hand on the head of everyone present tonight, that you allow thoughtful discourse, that you allow good discussion, that you allow us to be bold and brave in stepping in to all of the visions that you have for us in Madison. God bless all of our officials and everyone who is here, that we will act in accordance to your will for us, and that we will always and always be your hands, your feet, and your heart in this world. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Councilmember Seaford.
I am here. All right, we have a quorum. And do we have any amendments to the agenda? I've got one, but I'll let you go first.
Sure. I believe the only one is that we're postponing the donation from the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board to another meeting.
Okay. That was the one I had, so, all right. We'll do that, I think. I spoke with them before the meeting, they indicated September 8th, but we can confirm and just make sure. Okay? All right, with that, we're gonna move to approval of the minutes, and first up, we have our regular meeting from August 11th.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can't get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And as we just mentioned, presentation awards, that'll be postponed to likely 8th September. So, we're gonna move into public comments. And I have one here, but just reminding everyone, you have three minutes to address council. I do ask, when you approach the podium, please just give us your name, address, and/or district for the record, whichever you're comfortable with, and we'll go with those signed up, and then we'll open it to everyone. So, first one signed up is Mr. James Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Jim Chamberlain. I live in District 7, it seemed to be District 5. I'm president of Madison Greenways and Trails, which serves on the City Recreational Advisory Board. And just as an aside, we love Corey. He does a great job juggling all the diverse demands on the rec department. Really enjoy working with him. And I know there are much larger issues on tonight's agenda, but we have a question about an item that we thought would be on the agenda tonight. That was our understanding from rec board discussions. And that's about the Madison Quarry Park site survey proposal. It's not listed tonight, and we're hoping y'all can advise us on the status of that in the next few days, just to see where we stand on that. This is our second year to request this survey, and we believe it's really critical that we do this in 2026. We've been working with the rec department. This would be a small $10,000 survey to, just to study the site and think about what its best potential uses are. And we believe a few dollars in time spent now can save great expense later. Now, the survey would be performed by the Landscape Architecture Company, Alta, who is the lead designer for the Singing River Trail, which goes right by the quarry. Will go right by the quarry, I should say, someday. And this will not conflict with the Mill Creek Preserve Site Survey, the survey that we're very thankful that council and mayor approved. This will be done by Land Trust, M G and T. So, the city, as you well know, has recently approved the On Track 2045 Comprehensive Plan. It was a thorough, multi-year effort with all city stakeholders involved. The plan makes low-impact, low-cost development of the 66-acre forest adjoining the quarry a Priority One Greenway Project. This is Project G46 in the plan. Madison Utilities has conferred with this plan through its participation and review. A site survey done by Alta in 2026 is the best way to begin developing the cooperation needed among all stakeholders to make Madison Quarry Park a much-needed green space for both town Madison and the city. So, we urge the city to approve and proceed with the site survey in 2026. Thank you.
Sure. And I can address it at my time when the time comes.
Okay, sure. Okay, that's all we have signed up to speak ahead of time, so is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak? Come forward, please.
Pat Freel, District 1, quick question. The Train Ahead sign for northbound Wall Trianna, when will that be installed?
Don't know. I will get, as Mara had told her today, I don't have an answer. We, it's in the budget, and we will get with Public Works to find out for you.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else design for?
John Bruce, District 6. Greetings, neighbors. This is a call for limited government, individual sovereignty, and personal responsibility. I'll quote the Alabama Constitution, Section 35, "Objective of Government." The sole objective and only legitimate end of government is to protect the citizen in the enjoyment of life, liberty, and property. When the government assumes other functions, it is usurpation and oppression. I believe the city of Madison has already exceeded those limits, and it's in need of reform. I see it in the 800 pages of ordinances. It's not small. I mean, it's not a light read. It's biblical level. So, I'll just give an example. The business privilege tax, for instance, which could be an issue as far as its application unequally applied. So, there are remote workers in Madison that work for businesses in Huntsville, but if you're a remote worker in Madison, who's a business in Madison, you're gonna be getting a business privilege tax license. So, that would be an example of an unequal application if the city of Huntsville isn't, if businesses in the city of Huntsville doing business in Madison aren't also billed for that. Mind you, I'm not actually advocating for that. I'm advocating for exempting remote workers. Assembly and parade permits, that could be a First Amendment issue. We have a 60-day timeframe on that. And so, if I wanted to go and protest with a group of my friends, I think I could get away with it individually, based on the ordinances. But if I was to do it as a group, then I could be in violation of the assembly and parade permits. Nuisance on overgrown grass, there's a life, you know, health, safety issue within that. I agree that that needs to be there, but what I would disagree with is there being subjective criteria for it instead of objective. 12 inches, that's objective, measurable. But being unsightly, or growth of grass, or weeds, or what's a weed and what's not a weed, whether it's valuable or undesirable, these are subjective. Who knows? So, it's just ripe for abuse, as well as other ordinances. But I'll just leave you with the question. What are the first principles that guide what city government should do? And what are the limiting factors that should restrain city government from doing more? So, I just wanna leave you with that question. If you want to discuss this with me, I'd be glad to discuss it more. If you have any questions before I go, I'm out of time.
All right, all good. Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? You don't have to run. We're good.
I need the exercise.
But the speed is impressive.
Yes.
Thank you.
We like the energy.
Jeffrey Johnson, I'm in District 4. I meant to call the person about this last week when I first noticed it, but he reminded me, and I forgot. But that wonderful, on the southbound going down Wall Trianna, that great sign about the Train Ahead, Seek Alternate Route, I noticed when it was lit up last time, I saw it about a week ago, the top row, the D doesn't light up anymore, and then on the bottom, the U T E doesn't light up, and the top of the O doesn't. So, it says Train Ah Heah, Seek Alternate Russian. So, maybe that can trickle down to the sign guy, before it gets worse, because that's a great sign. And it's not that old, so anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting us know that. We will get that fixed. And then, Pat, I didn't mean to be short, but one of the things, I was asked that today on the other sign coming from the south going north, and we absolutely think it should be in as quickly as we can. I just didn't get ahold of the guy who manages that for us to find out a timeframe on when that will be ready, but we want that one to be done, too. And I will find out for you, because it is something, as you say, that makes a big difference for us. So, we'll get that answer for you also. Okay?
Anyone else desiring to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, today, we attempted to have a finance committee meeting at 4:00. We did not reach a quorum again, so there was no finance committee meeting. But the finance committee has had the opportunity to review the regular and periodic bills. And also on the consent agenda, we have the acceptance of a donation from Madison County Commissioner Steve Heraway in the amount of $75,000. The money is to be used towards four Lucas devices and one TNT 8-volt rescue tool package. Not sure exactly what is included in the package, but it sounds good. And with that, I move to approve.
I'll second that. We've got a motion and a second. Was there any discussion on this? Can we get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And we'll move to presentation reports, and Mayor, you're up first.
All right, well, I'll go back, Jim, to answer your question. We still absolutely feel like the quarry is a critical component of looking at that 66 acres and trying to figure out how we can best utilize that. It will take a little bit more time before we move forward with the agreement as we are working with Madison Utilities, both on what needs to be done to make sure that is a secondary water source for Madison Utilities. And sometimes fencing and different things on that are either coming down or being cut, and we want to make sure we take care of that first. Secondly, the utilities and the city are possibly looking at some swap of land that in turn would help each other with different things that we need done. An example would be, a lot of times, the city needs a place when the storms come through, when our public works team picks it up and then needs to store it. Right now, sometimes we bring it all the way up there. We need something that's a little bit more effective for us and then wouldn't get in the way were we to want to use that, have to build a parking lot and so forth. So, if you have a little patience, it may be a couple of months before we actually get there. But we do absolutely feel like it's a gem that we want to be able to utilize in a way that everybody can use that. And so, that's why. Some of you guys may not be aware, but there's an election next Tuesday. I'd say that kind of, and so, part of the reason we had the meeting tonight, moving it ahead, is to give the team for the District 4 that has the voting in the council chambers here the ability to get all that in Monday night, not have to rush, do it correctly. I appreciate Lisa and her team, Deidra from the city, who has been working diligently to get information out to the community. A couple of things, everyone, we did redistrict in 20, end of '23, I think, maybe beginning of '24. But I'd ask, go to your, if you're not sure, if you still vote at the same place, you can find that on our website. There's a map, exact goes down to the street and house of where you vote. And I will say, if you are in Limestone County, that you will move from Lamb of God, you will vote at James Clemens. And we certainly, again, I want to thank Dr. Nichols and his team for helping us secure a facility that is much safer for us to get in and out of as we've grown dramatically. I think I saw, there's about 9,000 houses in Limestone County. I'm not sure if that's all in Madison, but that's a whole lot of what's there. So, the election is next Tuesday, 7 to 7. And again, Lisa and her team have worked with our probate judge. One of the things that even as a candidate, not this time, but as a candidate or a community, we're gonna work to try to get the results out as quickly as we can. We want them correct, but we will have somebody within the probate judge's office here. So, as those come in, it can be typed in directly into their system, which I think will expedite the results. If you haven't, if you will not be able to vote next Tuesday, tomorrow is the last day, correct? That you can vote absentee? Okay, taking them up to the 21st to walk in, mail-in has to be by tomorrow. So, walking in, you can do it to the 21st, mailing in, it needs to be done by tomorrow. Either way, the election is the 26th. Along the same line, several people have gone through the Civic Awareness Academy. I think Tracy told me, applications are open right now. We have about 18 people who have already signed up. You know, we try to keep it right around 30, 31, if we need to. But the applications will be taken through August 29th. And as I said, it's a great program where you learn a lot about what's happening in the city. And I think one of the neatest things that comes out of that is we have roundtable discussions each week where the different people who are speaking then go around to the different tables, and one-on-one conversations are had. We've learned as much, hopefully, as others have, and the sharing of information has absolutely been critical. And then lastly, along with our finance director and our bond specialist, we had a call with Moody's. Moody's is one of the two bond agencies who the city, basically grades the city as far as our finances. A great call that I think will easily see where we keep our ratings. One thing, while, you know, it's always no secret that the city has some debt, I say some debt debt, it continues, as they pointed out over the last two years, to get better. And they basically said, keep that going, and within the next one to two years, they can see our grade going up. They absolutely, as you can imagine, coming out of New York and the Northeast, are just absolutely amazed at what's happening in this area, not only with Madison, but Huntsville and the surrounding areas. So, a really positive call there that leads me to, we're working on budgets right now. Probably by the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll get that over to the finance committee. But working hard, and I'm very happy to see that, again, we'll be able to add a step increase for our employees, seeing what we can do from a COLA cost of living. But as, you know, we look at revenues versus expenses and trying to take care of all that we need to in the city, again, a goal will be, as we always had with the COLA, but we're working hard on that right now. So, with that said, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Okay, so, council District 1 is out tonight. We will move to council District 2.
Okay, and since Paul already reminded everybody to vote next Tuesday, I will not remind you again. But I did want to say one thing about the finances. We have, as of July 31st, our revenues are in, our actuals are about 89.42% of our budget. So, they're coming in a little bit slower and a little bit lower than what we had thought, but they are above where we were this time last year. So, our projection for the budget is off a little bit, but we're still growing. Our revenues increased this year over last year. The good news is our expenses are less than what we expected also, so by about this same amount. So, our expenses are at 73% of the budget as of the end of July. So, while it looks like overall we may be a little bit behind what we had budgeted, we're gonna be fine because of the offset of both of them being lower than what we expected. And I've got those numbers, if any of y'all want to look at them. And that's all.
All right. Good news. All right, we'll skip districts 3 and 4, both of them are out tonight, and we will move to District 5.
No new business.
Okay, and District 6?
I would like to remind everyone that the Madison Street Festival is coming closer and closer. Charity's smiling. She's in charge of volunteers. So, my plea to everyone is anybody that wants to get involved, just reach out and be part of the festival. It is a great opportunity to just work together as the Madison family that we are. It is such, so much fun, and we have planned so many excellent, excellent venues this year. So, yeah, as usual, it stops, and it's at the beginning of the school break this time instead of at the end. So, if everybody could stay just that one extra day, so we could all be there together, that'd be great. But that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And we'll do District 7. So, for myself, I just was remiss, actually, last week on our agenda for both the stadium and animal control, and I think this ties in to what you were talking about with Moody's. We didn't mention that. We're actually paying cash for those things. So, the ability to do that, I think, just says a lot about what the team here does and making sure that all of our tax dollars are managed wisely. So, with the fact that Moody's is looking at, hey, we're doing well, and might be upgrading in a few years, and then the ability to do both the stadium and animal control without having to go into debt, and then also what we've done in the past with the fire and police and been able to pay cash for a lot of those assets, I think speaks testimony to what the staff here does. And, you know, I think with the growth that we're planning on and what we've seen in the past, I think that, you know, shows pretty wise investments there, so. That was all I had. So, we'll move into, we don't have any boring committee appointments and public hearings. We have three tonight, and Mayor Beth, I will turn it over to you, ma'am.
First is proposed ordinance number 2025-204. This is to rezone 2.84 acres located on Madison Boulevard, just east of Research Boulevard. You can see it there hashed. This property is currently zoned industrial. The request is to change it to commercial. You can see that there is B3 all along Madison Boulevard on the opposite side and to the east. The planning commission and staff are recommending this. We did not have anybody attend the public hearing expressing any concerns. The applicant for this has not indicated that they have a specific development proposal. They just think it would be more marketable with a commercial zoning, and we are recommending approval.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With that, we will open the public hearing and ask if anyone has any comments on this. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I did have one question. Is that adjacent to the cemetery?
It is. And they will have a shared access if you see the purple right there.
Yeah, right in between.
Okay. Right in between, that's going to be a shared access for actually the church and the cemetery. There's a master plan for a church on that hill, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Roblesky. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
All right, that motion passes.
Your next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-207. This is a request to zone 13.9 acres, 98 acres, as agricultural zoning upon annexation. You can see the property there. It's on the south side of Gillespie, east of Brown's Ferry. Annexation request is later on your agenda. This property was acquired by a religious organization. They're proposing a temple on the property, Zone R3, that's in the city. And the portion of this property is going to be used for their stormwater detention and a secondary access. The majority of this property is in the floodway or a flood plain and cannot be developed. It will remain in its natural state on the eastern portion of the property. The rezoning request or the zoning request and annexation were supported by the Planning Commission. We did not have anybody speak in opposition to the request. We did have some questions that we fielded, and we are asking for your approval this evening.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone here wishing to address counsel? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you. And last public hearing item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-210. This is also a zoning request upon annexation. Subject property is 1.43 acres. It actually consists of two lots that are developed with single-family homes. The requested zoning is R1A. The Planning Commission and staff are supporting this. This is consistent with city policy. We did not have anybody speak against this project at the Planning Commission meeting and asking for your approval.
All right. With that, we'll open a public hearing on this. Anyone wishing to address counsel? All right, saying none, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that, we'll go into department reports. And I don't think I see anyone here from court, so I think I've got this one. First one is Resolution Number 2025-258-R, and that is reappointing presiding municipal judge and associate municipal judge. And a hush falls over the crowd.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion over that? I was like asking my wife to marry me. I didn't know what she was going to say.
It's just reappointing the current.
It's reappointing the current once, yes. All right. Motion and a second. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And next up is Engineering.
Okay, I have Resolution Number 2025-248-R. This is awarding a contract to Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $810,173.30 for the Balch Road and Gooch Lane Roundabout Project to be paid for Fund 38.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. When is this going to start? Do you know?
This one probably won't start until May or so. I think May is in the contract of when the start time is. Yep. Still got a lot of relocating of utilities and finishing up some right-of-way acquisitions.
Well, the actual road piece of it, there's a lot around it before that, is what you're saying? Yes. Okay.
Okay. All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Thanks, sir.
You got one more?
Uh, I think it's legal.
Oh, it's legal. Hey, Michael, can you, real quickly, before you go, give us a quick update on the Brown's Ferry Burgery Roundabout? I think one of the things that so many people are asking about it tells me, you know, just how needed that was in that area. We're getting close.
I spoke with the project manager for the contractor last week. We're on track for end of the month opening it, so that's still the plan.
Yeah.
Open it then.
Okay. Thank you.
I haven't forgotten about the Snickers bar. I'm trying to find a big enough one.
I don't need it. Keep it.
Oh, yeah, no, I'll bring you one. A bunch of them. All right. Legal?
Good evening. I have a first reading for ordinance number 2025-263 to share with you this evening. This is an ordinance to authorize Madison Utilities to dispose of certain light and heavy equipment, various types of trucks and mowers and excavators. And by state law, we are required to ask council to pass an ordinance to allow them to dispose of this equipment. So this is a first reading this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And last, but certainly not least, planning. Long time no see.
Yes. Vertically challenged. All right. First is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-204, and this is to assent to the annexation of the 13.98 acres that you just approved the zoning for. You can see that property shown on the slide. It is south of Gillespie and east of Brown's Ferry.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? One question I have, and I think I know the answer, but I'll make sure, is that white space between the hash and the road there, does that pass the right-of-way?
It is. It's kind of a mystery little piece that we discovered when this request came forward. So we've been working with GIS and engineering to ultimately, we'll get that line work cleaned up.
All right, cool. All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you. Your next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-208. This is to assent to the annexation of the 1.43-acre property that you would become R1A zoning. Again, this is two lots developed with two homes, and we are recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Your next item is just a first reading. This is Proposed Ordinance Number 2025-253. This is for vacation of utility and drainage. You can see there are five locations. This is to accommodate retaining walls at the rear of these properties. And so we will be back at your next meeting asking for your approval of this vacation. It has been reviewed by all the departments and utilities and so forth.
Okay.
All right.